Good evening, everybody. Today is the Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024 Lakeville Select Board meeting. Is there anybody here this evening besides Lake Cam that is recording the meeting? So this evening, for the first time ever, we have all members present with new names. So we've got Members Fabian, Donahue, Candido, Carboni, and Daye. All five members are present. And normally, the first meeting after an election, we jump right into reorganization, but we thought that this being a bit of a special meeting, we do a couple of quick things first. So before we dive into, you know, kind of a Select Board member comments or statements they'd like to make, we'd like to introduce Clerk Drain, who has a very important role in the town as far as history goes. And I don't know if you'd like to say anything and talk about what you've brought with you this evening?
Sure. I have some history about the Select Board. So of course, as you know, Lakeville was incorporated in 1853. So the first election town meeting that took place on Saturday, May 28, 1853, at 1:00 PM, which is 171 years ago, at the Washburn Schoolhouse, which was located at the Old Town Hall or the Old Town House, which is across from the Old Public Library. So that's where the meeting/election was held and by ballot. So the following town meeting adjourned at 4:00. So the following were by ballot, a moderator, Harrison Staples. We had selectmen. Also, their duties were also elected as assessors. We had Reuben Halford, that's Rob McCully, and Nathaniel Sampson. Keep in mind, this stipend back then was $3. So yeah, that must have been a lot of money back then. The town clerk and treasure collector was Isaac Sampson. The overseers of the pores. We have Eliza Richmond, Job Pierce, and Lieutenant Ebenezer Pierce. We had school committee. We had the constables. We had field divisions and fence viewing. Surveyors of highway, surveyor of lumber, and measures of wood and bark. So today is an exciting day to see five members, five dynamic individuals representing the Select Board. And on behalf of the town clerk's office, I am excited to see you all. And we appreciate the hard work you're gonna put into all this. And I am so happy to work with you. So congratulations. And this is a first for Lakeville. So thank you.
Thanks, Lo.
Thank you. Appreciate you doing that research.
And if anybody wishes to see the book, it's here. And you might need this.
I know you've had a very busy week. Do you wish to hang out, or would you like to get some rest?
I really think I wanna hang out.
All right. Okay.
This will be your first meeting.
Keep us in line?
Yeah.
All right. All right. So with that, so again, welcome all new members. And I'd like to open it up and see if any of our members would like to make any statements. And then after such, we're gonna let the public make a few statements on things maybe you'd like to see from us. So I don't know if anybody wants to jump in or go down the row?
I'll go first. So I'm starting my sixth year as selectman, 10th year of service to town. So in 2019, when I was on, when I got on the board, we had the first-ever woman majority on the board. So up until that time, there had only been, I believe, two women, Nancy Yates and Mitzi Hollenbeck, that were Select Board members. And they were called selectmen back then. And, you know, we did change that, I think, in 2020 or 2020 around. I can't remember. But so we thought that was significant, that we, for the first time, had a woman majority on the board, because it was always a job, you know, designated mostly for men and a lot of times for the elders. So to come this far is pretty nice. Looks like we outnumber you now, Brian.
We are a supermajority.
Yeah. So, you know, so anyways, so, you know, change is inevitable and, you know, it's how we embrace it and move forward. And it's nice that we keep records of all this. So yeah, so I just wanna say welcome to our two new members. Glad to have you back, Lorraine. We go back a long time, and we've both done a whole lot of work for the town. And I know we can all work together really well. So thanks.
Thank you.
Would you like to go and go down the row?
No, someone else can go first.
I'll go. Very happy to be here. Happy to see everyone. Happy to be on this side of the table. I was over there for a while. Happy to be on this side of the table. Very excited to see all the things that we can do together, all the things that we can move forward, all the things that are in process now, that can finally move to the final stages, or things that just need to be re-looked at and redone. It's gonna be an exciting time. And now we have capacity to put things onto people, which is a reasonable ask, whereas in a three-member board, it could be probably overwhelming sometimes, all the requirements, especially as the requirements continue to increase from the state and the federal government and from the needs of what's going on. So I just approach this with a lot of gratitude and knowing that I'm probably not gonna always make the choice that everyone makes, but I will do it with the best intention and I will do it with the most amount of information and thoughtful discourse that I can.
Excellent. Welcome. I'm just really excited to be back here. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be able to continue to serve in this capacity. And the fact that we are part of something so monumental for our community, for five of us to be sitting here, is just wonderful. And I do look forward to working with everybody here and seeing some of the great things that we can do as a community. And just very happy to be here.
Come back.
Thank you.
You want to go?
Yeah, I'll go. Sure. Thank you to everyone who voted, in general, not just for me. As usual, being a part of that process is very important. It is exciting. It is new. And I think it's gonna go well. I think it's been kind of a wild time with everybody over the past couple of years. And now that people who are still involved are still involved, it just, it'll flow. So that's it.
All right. I tried to pull out some facts, and yes, I typed it, 'cause I figured I'd forget them all. So I take pleasure tonight serving on the town of Lakeville Select Board, the first ever meeting of its new five-member board. And I'm personally happy to have four ladies on my side. That's not a bad position to be in. So as Clerk Drain explained, this moment's been 171 years in the making. Try to provide some context to that. The spring clamp clothespin, invented in the very same year, 1853. The United States' transcontinental railroad hadn't even begun construction until 1863, 10 years later. We didn't have mass-produced toilet paper until 1857. So there you go.
Makes you wonder what they did before.
I don't wanna wonder what they did. And both the rotary washing machine and the pencil eraser came along in 1858. And also in 1853, when that book was first written in, there were still 19 states left to be admitted to the Union. So that's been around a while. Thank you for keeping it safe. So we'll put a bodyguard in the budget next year for that. So welcome back, Member Carboni, and welcome first-time members Donahue and Candido. I hope you're, I hope the new members find serving on this board a positive and rewarding experience. I thank my colleagues Fabian Carboni for our last year's service together, which we knew was approaching this moment in time. To some degree, we held back on discussions on certain topics, certain decisions, knowing full well that a broader spectrum of opinions, input, and community representation was not far off. Now that this moment is actually here, I do challenge our board. Think bigger, challenge the status quo, and do all that we can to ensure the success of Lakeville long after our service has been completed, as the original three set out to do 171 years ago. Let us draw on the experience of those not around us just at this table, but throughout our community. Let us hold discussions which will be complex and remind ourselves that many things worth doing are not easy to do. I, for one, would like to see this board put more pressure on areas such as, but not limited to, economic development to reduce the residential tax burden, land use and zoning bylaw reviews, organizational restructuring in the name of efficiency, and finding ways to shift to a more proactive position rather than being reactionary. I do look forward to working with each and every one of you. I hope we continue to refrain too much from discussion of business outside these walls. Now that our quorum is three, not two, it is actually legally permissible to talk shop to some degree outside of these walls with a colleague outside of an open meeting. So please take no offense of chatting, and I'd say I'd rather just take this to the whole board. So thank you again to Lakeville for the opportunity to serve you folks, and I look forward to us getting to work.
Thank you, Brian.
So if the board is okay with it, we did put on 15 minutes for public comment if we'd like to perhaps hear from some of our folks that perhaps voted and, you know, think about what they'd like to see from us over the next year. So if anybody would like to make a comment, feel free. We were gonna limit it to 15 minutes, but I don't see anybody jumping up at a microphone at the moment. And if there's nothing, then we'll move on to reorganization of the board. Sue brought 1,000-page essay.
Well, I had people that couldn't come tonight, so they said, could you, if you're going, can you please ask a few questions? Well, these aren't mine. So let's see, the first thing that...
Not to interrupt you, Sue, I will just say that...
Oh, I didn't say many of them.
Well, that, but as I always say, like, public comment is public comment, right? So don't feel that you must respond, have to respond. This is your opportunity to bombard us with anything you'd like.
Okay. So anyway, so I feel a bellyache. I'll make it official. So a few people were inquiring why our website, the annual reports, haven't been put on the website since 2018. And we'd like to see those put back on the website. Also, we were looking at the ZVA minutes. From 2011, there have only been like one sudden minutes for the whole year. I know we can go to Lillian and ask for them, but to me, that's such a waste of her time to have to go looking for these minutes, and then the people have to wait, you know, 10, 20, whatever, you know, 'cause you're very busy.
Mr. Chairman, is this agendas and minutes, or just minutes?
I didn't even go into the agendas. I was looking at the minutes. I mean, 2011 only had one sudden minutes. That's it. So, I mean, there's a lot of minutes missing. I'd be more than happy to volunteer to look for them and scan them, 'cause I know your time is...
Mr. Chairman, it's usually the committee for the board who officially chooses for that.
But I mean, that's, you know, 2011 only one sudden minutes for the whole year, and that's...
We have a designated person doing that, so I don't think that's the case. I think you probably didn't look in the right spot.
It could have been housed in a different area. Sometimes they switch it.
We have a dedicated person doing that, so I think this may be a couple months out there, but not years.
We can trouble her.
Well, I mean, like, 2011, there was only one sudden minutes when you look at, on the website, under minutes.
Yeah. Take a look.
Okay. So that was just one thing.
It's probably on the somewhat of a hill, their section of minutes, not just minutes section. I'll keep that in mind.
Okay. Brian and I had talked about the meeting calendar. I mean, I think it's great that you're starting to experiment with that so that people can plan ahead of time, you know, 'cause if you have scheduled meetings, just put it as tentative so that people know, so they can plan accordingly, instead of finding out two days before, once the agenda's posted and stuff.
So planning out the horizon of the minutes?
That would be nice. I mean, it'd be great, so people could just look on the calendar and say, oh, tentative date, the Select Board is on such and such a date, you know, ZVA such and such.
I know Sue has had an opportunity to see this, 'cause I pointed it out to her, but thanks to Tracy and Kim and Lillian, we do now have upcoming meetings listed. It's not on the official posting forum, but it's just there at least to give people an idea of there will likely be a meeting this evening if you wanna move your own personal agenda around, so at least they kinda see it coming.
Well, it'll certainly help me, because I look at that calendar, I'll be like, oh, I do have a meeting coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah, or instead of having to go back and listen to the meeting to hear when they say at the end of the meeting, when the last meeting is stopped, that's all. I know at one time, we had talked about Chapter 61, the land acquisition, the process. I don't know if that's something that we might wanna revisit again and just shore it up after.
It's on the draft agenda for Monday.
Perfect. Lovely. All right. So the next thing is, the 5% minimum land area map, we don't have one. It'd be great to be able to generate one. Sertic can't do it, 'cause I guess it's a conflict of interest for them. So it would be something that the town would have to look into, you know, but I mean, I think we really need to know, you know, where we stand as far as...
As related to 40Bs.
Yes. Yeah, so that we know. So, you know, if we're close to safe harbor, not close to safe harbor, and then when a 40B project comes in, we can say, well, we're already there, and we can deny it. So I mean, I think we really need to get that, that map. Let's see. Cox Director. This was a recommendation someone made. They were just wondering if maybe all town home land could go under a Cox Director control and then lease out the land to people, to like different organizations, like yoga, swimming lessons, paddleboard, or any of the property that we own by the pond. They suggested maybe putting electric and water in at the industrial park and lease a little food truck there to generate revenue that might help pay towards a park or a park. It's just a thought. This one will probably not be very popular. So someone wanted to know if anyone is on a board that has any financial interest in land development or buildings, not be allowed to build in the town that they are serving as long as they're on a board. They know that they are covered by state ethics, but it would be nice to have more stringent rules. What was that? I don't know. I thought, I don't know, I thought, didn't Midlerbrook have a rule or not, that you couldn't be on a board?
No.
It might have been another one.
Nope.
And then the last one. So just a question, do you happen to know the ZVA hearing that's gonna be about Rocky Woods? Is that gonna be at the high school? Does anybody know where it's gonna be?
My understanding is that they're investigating at least Loom Pond Lodge, that can fit a few hundred people.
The parking's horrible there, though. The lighting, the acoustics.
The, we have trouble even just getting the high school or something. Would you like to say something?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Talking to the chairman of the ZVA, in fact, today, we talked about that. Obviously, you could reach out to him, but he thought that would be a better venue because it's more interactive. Where the high school, they're up on the stage, it's tough for members to see who's in the audience. Where it's, everyone's on the same level, it's better give and take, it's better for presentations. That's his thinking.
Okay, 'cause from what I understand, the acoustic is not that great there.
I know.
The cafeteria at the high school would also serve that.
It's a possibility.
Be all one, all flat, one surface.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm afraid of the parking, because of lighting's not that great there. And at least at the high school, we have a big parking lot. 'Cause I mean, you're probably gonna expect at least a hundred people to show up. And I don't know if Loom Pond would hold that. And then we'd be back in the same situation that we have to turn people away, now it's an open mini-mor violation, and we have to cancel that.
Actually, do you, do you know how many, the capacity?
Two-fifty to 300.
Two-fifty to 300.
At Loom Pond?
Yes. Yeah, we checked the capacity.
But is that both rooms or just...
Both rooms. Both rooms.
One room holds 185, the other room holds 85.
Thank you, Paula.
185, 85, yeah.
It'll be a little tight.
It's gonna be similar to when we have town meeting and have to have the overflow rooms potentially.
Correct. You would have to have speakers and television and all of that.
I will pass your concerns on.
Well, plus, I mean, Rocky Woods is right in that area. I mean, most of the people don't be coming right there yet.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would just think that the high school would be much better.
In charge.
What can I say, man?
Thank you. I'm done.
That's it? Come on. Seven? All right.
Mr. Chair, can I address the town reports?
Yeah, sure.
So we finished 2020, and it's printed, right, Tracy?
It's at the printer now. It's not done yet.
Okay. So they're not as easy to put together, 'cause I'm almost done writing 2021 for the selectmen, and I believe I'm one of the last ones to finish. And then I also inherited 2022, which wasn't supposed to be my year, so I have that one underway. But they should be done pretty soon. It was Tracy and my goal to try to get those done, but they're, 2020's almost ready to... And that was the COVID year, so we didn't, you know, we didn't wanna just put in there... Yeah, we got hit by COVID. We really wanted to reflect how the town was affected, and so we put a lot of time into that one.
So it'd just be nice to get it back on the website, so if you can...
And Tracy's already chasing me for 2023s.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have anything to add to any of Sue's questions or questions she's proxying? If not, is there anybody else that has anything? No? Okay. Seeing none. All right, then we'll move on to number three, reorganization of the Select Board. So first meeting after each election, we go through and do a number of positions. So tonight, at a minimum, we'll do chairman, vice chairman. Other positions that are out there are director of veteran services, representative of Plymouth County Advisory Board, the parking clerk, as well as designated point persons. So we got a budget of FYI 25, which is currently empty since that was wrapping up. School department liaison, council and agent liaison, park commission liaison, regional finance committee for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, and union negotiations. And then there's another, there's a number of other ones that have expirations July 31st of 2024. I'm just gonna check in with Tracy. I believe you told me those ones are a little more complicated, because we'd have to resign and then reappoint.
Correct.
So those we could, enter to me, the clerks here, we could write in time right now.
Or you could, you could make them tonight effective August 1st.
Okay.
Or they could just go with all the July reappointments.
And then I believe Vice Chair Carboni expressed an interest in potentially a different expiration date of those the next time that they were appointed.
So, you know, in thinking about how these are lined, you know, with the elected officials being sworn in and put on the boards, and then we reorganize as elected officials, but all of the appointed boards, committees, and commissions are not appointed until July, you know, before July 1st, and then they have to reorg. But we have to appoint some members from this board onto some of those boards. So I was thinking, and I had talked to Tracy about this, to see if she could look into, you know, any history on this, that why not have all of the appointments and, you know, happen in April, when the elections happen? And so everything just kinda rolls every year through April. So when we, elected officials reorganize, then the appointed boards, committees, and commissions can reorganize as well. Just keep that same timeline.
Do we know why July 31st was picked? I mean, July 1st would have been the new fiscal year.
Right.
But July 31st has always been random.
Right. It was, it was like that when I inherited it in 1999. So that's what I came into it.
Check the book. Maybe the book...
Yeah, it's in the...
It's in the... Have a rule in there.
It was the harvest moon. It was the moon. It was the lighting of the moon.
Who knows?
But... So if that is something that, you know, this board wanted to entertain, you know, shifting, I mean, we can certainly, you know, transition that in, you know, if... So if we appoint people in July, the expiration date could be April.
Or March 31st, or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll have to deal with those ones later anyways, it sounds like. Unless I misunderstood, but...
No.
All right. Back we go. All right. So traditionally, we do appoint a new chair every year. There is a Select Board policy that says someone cannot serve chair two years in a row unless there is unanimous vote of the board itself. And does anybody wanna have any discussion before any motions are made, or... No? Okay. Well, honestly, I will, I would actually like to step down and make a motion to nominate Vice Chair Carboni as chairman for the next year. Is that a second?
Second.
We were first and second. Do we have any discussion? No? Just say, thank you for the grace you showed over the last year. You stepped in every time we asked, or when I was unavailable. You've been around, you know the procedures, and I think it's the right time.
Oh, thank you. Well, if I do decide to accept this...
No.
Is there conditions?
No.
It might be.
It's just a vote. You don't get the choose.
That I would, I would be looking to this board for, you know, support on a, you know, shall I stumble?
Don't worry, Lorraine. I'll, I'll be there to tell you you're wrong.
Oh. Sure.
Yeah, no. Very good. I think well deserved, and I'm hoping that you will accept the nomination.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Any other further discussion? No? Okay. Then we'll do a roll call vote. Member, go this way. Candido?
Aye.
Daye? Aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Fabian?
Aye.
And Carboni?
All right, aye.
Step on her foot.
How do I?
All right. Thank you much. Appreciate that. So with that, turn it over to you.
I think you should finish the meeting.
No!
As the chair, as the chair, I would like to have Brian from... You're on a roll, Brian. Keep going, please.
No, no, no. Do you really want to?
Yeah, no, seriously.
Right, but Lorraine's down the chair, so she's in charge of doing the rest.
And I could absolutely do this, but I think this is Brian's last, last meeting, so let's...
Last meeting?
Last meeting.
Don't scare Lil.
You don't have another election.
No, I'm, I'm happy to take over, Brian, if that's okay.
Sure. Go right back.
All right. So I'd like to ask the board if there's any nominations for, for Vice Chair. Discussion? Please. Are we gonna go through...
Oh, sorry, Brian.
Oh, just, are we gonna go through one by one? I just wanted to make sure that, that we're going one by one.
I'd like to at least address, address the topic.
Got it.
And then we can go from there.
Thank you.
Because I think that there might be, you know, some interest for...
All right. Brenna start to make a motion.
I nominate Member Fabian to be Vice Chair.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call, please. Candido, aye.
Daye, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping your votes in the same order.
All right. Change it up for the next one.
Well, we're alphabetical. No, wait. Carboni, aye. You gotta move. So I understand that there was, there was a request that had come through. I think that, especially from those that are viewing from home, that they might not always know who's saying aye. So if, you know, if it pleases this board, if we can just say our name with our, our vote would be, I think, helpful. All right. So the next position is the Director of Veteran Services. Brian, you currently hold that now.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Is, we'll take a nomination if that's...
It is a very low-impact position, if anybody's curious. So, really low impact.
I'll nominate Brian.
Second. All right. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Candido, aye. Sorry. Already off. Carboni, aye.
Daye, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
All right. And Leah, you have been holding the representative for the Plymouth County Advisory Board for quite some time now, right?
Quite some time. I'm very fond of the county. I'd like to stay with that, but if someone's dying to, you know, take it on, but...
Make the motion.
Second.
All right. Those are the motion. And a second on the floor for Leah to stay as that representative. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Candido, aye. Carboni, aye.
Daye, aye.
Tony, aye?
Fabian, aye.
All right. Now this one, I know we're all looking forward to putting our names here. Parking clerk.
I can't tell you how much pleasure this role gave me over the last year. It would be horrible if I lost it, because I know...
How many hearings did you actually have?
Parking clerk, what is it? One.
We had one hearing. One of the three people showed up. We had a great conversation. They went home without a parking ticket. You get a book to make tickets if you want to.
Don't tell people that.
Under those particular circumstances, they were forgiven, but...
In all honesty, the parking clerk was a little more busy when we had all our sports teams celebrating the parades, because everyone was illegally parked around the train. So there was a whole lot more parking tickets given. In all honesty, the parking clerk was a little more busy when we had all our sports teams celebrating the parades because everyone was illegally parked around the train. So there was a whole lot more parking tickets given out those years, so.
If anybody's curious, when you guys made me parking clerk last time, we had tickets from the eighties that were still outstanding. Those are now gone. We're all caught up, in case you're concerned about the workload.
Well done, Brian.
Maureen, I know you're gonna love me for this. I'm gonna nominate Maureen Candido for parking clerk.
I, I will gladly be excited to.
A second.
Roll on, thank you for that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
It's like hazing.
But you get a ticket book.
Yes.
All right, so the following designated point person. So these are more liaison positions, and I think that, you know, maybe this board can, you know, on a future agenda, maybe we can talk a little bit more about what that liaison position actually means. And, you know, maybe there's a way that we can report back to the, to the main body of things, you know, more, you know, smoothly. Because sometimes there's, you know, information that's out there that, you know, we might, you know, benefit from, from hearing directly from the liaison. But we'll try to figure that out, I guess, on a future agenda, but.
Chair, may I? Yeah. I just had a couple thoughts for this board as we're reorging in our, in our much bigger, broader sense. There is, there is thoughts that maybe, like, having, like, just topics for board members as opposed to, you know, calling them out individually might be helpful. Like, one person would be land use, another person would be infrastructure, another person would be, like, emergency services. You know, something like that where the boards and committees that fall under that jurisdiction and maybe the department heads that fall under that jurisdiction would be there. And that way, we'd kind of streamline a little bit of the communication going forward. I mapped out a few of the things, but I'm sure I didn't think of everything. But, you know, just thinking, like, budget, economic development, legal would be one. Health and human services would be like the COA, the Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera, of veteran services. And then schools would be its own category. And then land use would be planning, ZBA, Concom, parks. And then emergency would be police, fire, and DPW. DPW might be tricky because it could be falling under multiple categories. But if this board doesn't want to vote now and come up with maybe some individual suggestions on how it would make sense for us to move forward in a, you know, in a new way in order for us to be, I don't know, more streamlined and organized. And, and then that liaison role becomes a little bit more meaningful because you've got, like, that full picture of what's going on as opposed to, you know, the snippet, which doesn't really connect to anything. But those are my thoughts. If anyone wants to vote, I have no objections, but those are just my thoughts.
So I, I see value in what you're saying, and it really does, a lot of them, not a lot of them, some of them overlap, so there is value to that. I'd like to see us fill these.
Yep.
Just, you know, because some of them are, you know, really important. And it's almost just like we want to have someone there. But I would definitely, you know, like to see, like you said, there may be things that we've forgotten. And, you know, also get, you know, the town administrators' input on, you know, how to categorize things.
Right, yeah.
You know, because some of them do overlap.
Yeah, so maybe we put it back on agenda after the beginning of fiscal?
Yeah.
And that way, we can have a conversation.
Yeah, no, I, I think it would be definitely worth, and it might, you know, flow things a little bit more easily, too, yeah.
If you could include with that ahead of time the list of everything that's being considered, like, all of the boards, all the committees, and then that way, we can each kind of take a look at it.
I can do like a little org chart.
Exactly, yeah. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, so right now, we do have a school department liaison. That is, that is me, but anybody else is interested, I know.
I'm not sure if after her time on the school committee, if Brenna would like to do that, but I would appoint. Brenna, it's a little bit different type of, of a, you're not technically on the regional school committee, you're not on the regular school committee, but it's almost like you're still involved in, you know, some of the decision-making. I know we, right now, have to revisit the, uh, the capital planning committee with them and a few things. So I'd be just curious to see how Brenna could even develop the position, look at it for a couple months, and come forward with something, especially with her recent, you know.
Thee.
I second that, yeah.
I, I, was that a motion?
Well, yeah. I just didn't want to put her in that position if she was doing the dance to have been done with the school, so.
The reason I asked, too, is I was gonna, I thought Brenna would be a shoe-in for park commission liaison as well, so.
Well, we have a question. I do, too. I would do that as well. But I think she's still on the park commission.
Waiting for another year, right?
So what is that?
Yep. We can do that, right?
Yeah.
It would be a conflict, yeah, so. We have to figure that one out. But, and, I mean, this one here is, you can put as much time into it, or, you know, not a ton of time, and see how you, you know, come forward, and then we can see where we put it in the whole big scheme of things, but.
Yeah, and I think part of it, too, is, is trying to improve the, you know, lines of communication. I know that, you know, with our town administrator and our superintendent, you know, they do talk, you know, regularly. But there might be other ways that we can help improve that, so.
But, I mean, that, that's, school committee is probably one of our most stressful things to be on. And honestly, if you wanted a break, I would completely understand and support that as well, so.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna sidebar, side note real quick. COA, are you, are you invested in that?
I am.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yes, that one I am.
The two that I was, I was looking at was the Council on Aging Liaison and the Park Commission Liaison. But if I can't do the Park Commission Liaison, I'll do the school department, that's fine.
And like I said, we can, like, revisit everything.
Yeah, I mean, we can reach out and get another legal opinion, too, on parks if we want to, just to cover our bases.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
You're accepting?
Yeah, I'll accept.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
Leah, you're interested in staying on the COA?
I really am. It's very near and dear to my heart right now.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Carboni?
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
All right. Anybody interested in serving on the parks?
So, in, in all honesty, I just felt like I, I just, that was one that was either overlapped with other meetings that I was trying to get to. I attended as many meetings as I could. I wish I could have attended more, so, you know, I think someone who has a little bit more time or at least can try to focus.
Are those generally Thursdays?
Yeah.
That's my busiest day, unfortunately.
I, too, have Thursdays booked.
What was that?
Um, I have Thursdays booked, or Thursday.
We can always come back and revisit this one. Regional finance, Brian, you're currently on that now? Is that something you'd like to remain on?
I'm, I'm happy to stay on if you'd like. If somebody else is dying for it, they can have it, but.
Yeah, I'd, I'd actually make a motion to have Brian stay because he's into the whole building and of the new school over there, their new design, and he's been attending all those meetings. So make a motion to have Brian.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
And right now, I don't.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, Leah, this is for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School, not the old colony?
Oh, okay, okay. Regional, oh, that regional.
I was wondering what new building they were building.
Okay, yeah, I'm confused, sorry. But still, it remains because he's, you know, we're, uh, they have a whole other feasibility study going over there, too, so. Brian's very familiar with those now.
Um, I know unions, I think, we should probably still have somebody just in case something comes up where.
Yeah, that one's a little tricky. I volunteer to stay with it, even though we don't have union negotiations now until twenty, twenty six.
Twenty six, couple of years, yeah.
Yeah.
That or.
But some things come up every now and then.
Yeah, that or Maureen's, you know, previous experience in the TA role might be useful as well.
If, Leah, if, if you don't want to fight to the death over it, I'll take it in the end.
Yeah, I don't want to fight to the death over it.
I wouldn't want to step on you, but.
With the whole year we had, working on it, and thank God for Bob came in and helped us really get to the end there, so thank you, Bob, again, for that. So, no, I'm not gonna fight you over that.
Make the motion that Maureen be our union negotiations rep.
Uh, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
All right. Now, there is one other that, because I know that this was just a, a list that, you know, Tracy had given us for, as a guide, kind of where we are. But we do have one that we do need to fill because I know it's, it's, um, it's active right now is the TA Town Administrator Search Subcommittee. So we had left a, a space open for one of our new members that came on. So I would say that we probably should do that today so that that subcommittee can get started.
How many select board members are on there? Two?
It'll be two.
There's one now. We saved a spot for a second.
I'm the current one, Maureen.
I'll volunteer if anyone's looking to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Maureen.
All right, I'll, I'll.
Second, that's.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
All right, and then the last, I guess we'll just leave them as is, so we don't have to, you know, revisit all of this in, you know, a future meeting to see if we can't realign everything with the electoral election. If something comes up that we can't, then we know we can't, but. All right. Anybody else have anything about this? Did we miss any of the other? I can't think of anything.
It's over there. We're leaving budget empty for now because that's basically wrapped up, right?
Right. Because we're all doing it together.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
All right. So Tracy, would you clean up the list for us? Okay. Any new business coming before the board this evening? Old business?
So, I mean, I'm just thinking, so this whole, like, two people isn't a quorum anymore thing's gonna take a little getting used to. I, you know, if Brenna is agreeable, I mean, we can do some of the county stuff together. I mean, you know, the vote at the county would officially, you know, still be with me. But that's one that takes, you know, when I first started going, I was like, what is going on? But, you know, that's one that I, you know, would be willing to, um, it's just right now with all the ARPA stuff, I think there's like a little bit of training or whatever, so if you're inclined.
Would we call it like a, a primary and a, an alternate, or would you say just two people?
Just so the board knows, I may call Brenna one day and say, hey, do you want to go to the county with me? Because we're not breaking open meeting law at that point, you know.
Brenna can do that, I mean, if she's.
Yeah.
Meetings come up or whatever, she can, you know, just to get yourself a little bit more exposed to.
Yeah, because it's some of the different things. And actually, that relationship really helped me with the whole CARES money and all that kind of stuff when COVID started. So it's a good, it's, you know, one that, a relationship that needs to be fostered sometimes, and.
Yeah, and she'll have a chance to meet some of the key players.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to add an additional representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board, and for that, Representative's, do Brenna, Donahue.
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carboni, aye.
Candido.
Day, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Fabian, aye.
Thank you.
So whatever we call it, just additional?
Is that an actual position on their board, or do you just call it that?
Um, so we, yeah, there is an appointed person, and that person, it's a weighted vote at the county. So, um, so I will probably still have to make the vote and be there in person, but.
So should I amend that to a non-voting representative?
Yeah, let's do that just to make it legal, but.
In the record?
In the record.
Will you clean that up? Thank you.
And, and I only say this now because a lot of the stuff happens between now and, like, the end of the fiscal year. And that way, you know, maybe we can change that in July. But at least, you know, Brenna won't be just diving in, like, trying to figure it all out. Because it's just a whole other thing that, you know, just so, so for folks, if they're wondering, what the county does is they still own a lot of the buildings that our courthouses are in. And we have to, they create their budget. And as the advisory board, who is, there's a representative from each community and from Brockton as the city, we all have to approve their budgets or changes to their budgets, just like we do at town meeting for, you know, the budget that we put out. We do that for the county. And, you know, they generate revenue, but they also, you know, have programs and stuff. It's just a lot to learn at one time, so I think it would be great to, you know, to try to do that.
That's great.
Yeah, so.
All right, under old business, I do have something. The Lakeville Emergency Planning Committee met today at three o'clock to talk about kind of where we are right now in Lakeville because of the water situation. But this particular committee is, you know, I think the, the chief, the fire chief had said that they met one other time in, in the six years. So I think we walked away with that would probably be more often instead of a response to an emergency, but at least be a little bit more proactive in making sure that we have, you know, our communications all lined up. So as far as kind of where we are and the weather that's coming this evening, there'll be some information that will be put on the website, town website, so lakevilleMA.org. Be on the front, probably banner, if I'm not mistaken. They'll be reaching out through the social media channels, and I believe we have Facebook, I think it's not Twitter anymore, X, and Instagram. And the cable, Lake Cam, will have it on their channels. So whatever, you know, Comcast, I know, oh, I have them right here because I asked that question. So Comcast channels would be twenty-two, twenty-six, and nine. And the Verizon channels would be thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. So this is just, you know, if there's, you know, they, not anticipating any immediate dangers, but if somebody should need, you know, emergency services, obviously, nine-one-one is right there for you. You know, call that. If it's non-emergency related, you know, that's the number for the fire department. So, but they're aware and alert and, you know, ready to respond should we need to. So, all right, so just be aware that that's gonna be just out there. Did I forget anything from that?
I think that's it. One item for old business, if you may. So, Madam Chair, when I prepared the draft agenda for next week, I don't think we put revisit the ARPA projects on it. I don't know if yourself or member Fabian had a chance to send in commentary on those, but I had a lengthy amount of comments on the projects, which I apologize again for sending all this into you. I don't know if we want to give time for the new members to go through those and bring them up. I know time is starting to become an issue with some of those, but I would like an opportunity to rediscuss them in some form.
All right, do we have, so if it's not on Monday's agenda, we would have time if we put it on the next one, right?
We can put it on Monday's agenda if you want. I mean, that's, that would be up to you as chair.
We just still post them. We haven't posted yet.
Tomorrow, I'll email the new members, the projects, and the summary of what we've spent thus far. But as far, if you want, an upper discussion, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, it is sort of time-sensitive right now, so we, yeah, I understand that, you know, but we just don't want to give any money back to the county. So, you know, we want to, we want to keep it all, so we really need to do the asks. And we had, just for reference, we had, I thought, a really good capital planning meeting last Thursday, which, Maureen, you were there because you were the appointee from the fin, no, yeah, from the finance committee. So. So it was a pretty good meeting. We did a lot of talking about each thing and, you know, but I'm sure Bob can answer questions for anybody, yeah.
Yeah.
Will the Capital Expenditure Committee be meeting again soon?
We did not vote because there is certain things that Bob is going to work with the county to see if he can get them.
Okay, okay.
So our money that came directly to us, we, we can decide pretty easily, but we want to find out if we can get some of the big stuff done through the county and that's what Bob's working on right now.
Okay.
Yep, so that'll, that'll help us decide.
Going forward, I think, too, now, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the fact that, like, yeah, we can have two people at a thing. Like, you know, I don't remember if CEC's membership is set by bylaw or not, but we should maybe look at some of these things and say, it doesn't make sense to have a second member represented on where we can, if it makes sense.
It's not a bad idea. Anybody have any suggestions? I mean. Because right now, the Capital Expenditure Committee is already made up of a select board member, finance committee.
Two at large.
And two at large.
And a town administrator.
It would be six people if we did it.
Yeah.
That might be a little bit of a deadlock.
It might be a bad time of year, too, but just, just even not only just that, but just in general.
I think even so, you know, under old business again, so I've been the, the pond management representative, so I'm not the actual esalen upon complex person, that's Nancy Yates, but I've been sort of like that liaison position. But that one, again, I've been doing work on this for five years. I've been taking pictures of the water for the last month. But, you know, Lorraine was at the emergency meeting today because she was the person on the emergency, so that could be another one that.
Falls under the same umbrella.
Yeah, so I do think that these are some of the things that, you know. And and again, I agree with what Brian had said earlier that, you know, there were things that we said, okay, maybe we should do, should we do them, shouldn't we do them? And, you know, the folks of Lakeville wanted more representation. And like Brian said, that's why we held off on doing a few of these things. But I think that's exactly the reason why we need to take a look at all of these and see if we can overlap them.
You know, workshop them as we go along.
Yep.
But if anybody, you know, is interested in in any one of these, they can certainly attend, you know, just to kind of get a little bit more feel what, what they're all about. But, all right, yeah, we'll definitely put that on a future agenda. Any additional old business? All right, hearing done.
Before we adjourn, can I add something that Steve Spiller had concerns in that so some board was few minutes? Looking at their website, they have minutes from 2007 up to 2024. And all them, the last one being January 18 of 2024. So if you look at each individual board committees or commissions.
Okay, not the one that it has listed?
Yeah, under their boards and commissions, all their minutes are up today.
Okay, all right, thank you. It can be in two places, so. Yeah, I must have been looking on the wrong spot. Everybody was.
Clean that up, you know. What is it? Somebody told me two clicks and then they're just done. Okay, so if you can't get to the information in two clicks.
Just for the record, too, Madam Chair, I think I should share, beginning of new, you know, era here for us. Everything that we, even the packet that was this big last week is on the website. And folks have said to me, well, I can't find it. It's not under the agenda. All you'll find under the agenda is the, under the town calendar. Is the actual agenda. If you go to the boards and committees and then go to select board, then it's down at the bottom of that. But you can read along with every single thing that we have in front of us. And that was something that when COVID happened, we embraced it and we said, you know, Maureen, you were there, Lorraine, you were there at the time. And we said, we're just going to do what the state law says and post everything. And not all towns did that, but we did and we've been doing it ever since, even when those posting things changed. So, you know, that's transparency right there, so.
And for the new members and the public, too, one of the things that the three of us had asked the previous town administrator to look into is some kind of enhancements to allow us to have the agenda, the minutes, the packet, like all in one place. I know Tracy's been researching that as a few companies kind of narrowed down. So hopefully we can make that a better process in the future.
I just want to make sure that we reach everybody's and has, and everybody has equal access to everything, so.
I have one other thing, Madam Chair, and that's, so again, I don't remember if we have a technology liaison position, but I think we should at this point.
And I think we talked about, I mean, that's something that we can add to that list. Because I was going to go back to my notes from that meeting that we had about all, you know, having subcommittees. I think the IT committee was something that was very, there was an appetite for it.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. We had talked about it and I just don't want that to fall by the wayside because it's only getting more and more complicated. And, you know, I'm happy to have someone like Brian on the board who understands it inside and out because I don't, I'm afraid to say I don't. So, you know, and I don't know if we talked about having a community person, too, on that, but I just don't want that to. When you're making your list, Maureen.
Just send everything all over that we, if you can think of anything, because I'm going to dig through some of my old notes and, you know, the agendas, because I know that we had a pretty good conversation about that.
This is going to be a tough thing. This is why all these big boards have a round table.
You know, we used to try to do a horseshoe. We need a horseshoe. That might work, too.
So we'll have to experiment with the tables, so.
Another one that we had mentioned a while back was bringing back zebra, either.
Yes, yeah, that was another one.
Itself or a new iteration.
I know that that's been a favorite for.
Zoning board.
Bylaw, bylaw.
Zoning bylaw review.
Advisory.
What they said. Looking at our zoning bylaws and finding ways that people try to circumvent them and fixing them.
Yeah.
That's basically what it is.
Yep, yep. And it was, they were very, very active, very, yeah, some good work there. But, all right, so if there's nothing else, then I will.
Make a motion.
Second adjourned.
All right. All those in favor, Carbone aye. Six twenty-eight.
Day aye.
Donahue aye.
Fabian aye.
Thank you, everybody.